Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the October 1st, 2014 meeting of the Litchfield School Board. We are starting late, we were in session with our attorney, so I'd like to call us to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to revise the agenda and move a couple of business topics up, particularly salary guidelines and then the building security discussion up after the superintendent's comments. Summary of non-public actions, excuse me, from the September 24th, 2014 non-public session, Mr. Bork made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of September 17th, 2014 as written. Mrs. Lepore seconded the motion, carried 2-0-1 with Mr. Barka abstaining. I have a statement I would like to read. It's become apparent that no matter whether an individual believes the email published in the Hudson-Litchfield News proves a conflict of interest on my part, unfortunately, this will apparently be the focus of discussions at board meetings by board members, as well as members of the community. I say unfortunately, as there is much regular business to be considered. I would have hoped the board member who found the email would have brought it before the board per the policy. A topic was added to the 17th meeting, September 17th meeting, to see if the board would like to refer it to the attorney. Mr. York passed on that opportunity. It should be noted, the entire email thread was not presented to the HLN, only the first email. The email thread continues on and culminates with the chair asking if I intended to speak as, quote, "Citizen Dennis," unquote. A board member speaking as a citizen in a board meeting is not unprecedented, reference 2009 to 2012. I stated I would not. For me, the situation was closed. The original email was sent on May 13th, 2013, and never referenced by a single board member until after the vote on the superintendent's contract. I fully participated in the creation of the 2013 performance review of the superintendent, with no board member or superintendent objections. I fully participated in the creation of the 2014 performance review of the superintendent, with no board member or superintendent objections. I fully participated in board discussions, at least five that I can remember in non-public, on renewing the superintendent's contract. Only after sixteen-plus months and days after a vote that one or more members did not like the outcome of, I now have a conflict of interest according to at least one member. How could a member be permitted to participate fully in discussions if a conflict of interest existed? Quite frankly, they wouldn't. But it is quite an effective tool when it's released to the press. After all, everyone wants a scandal, right? At no point did I raise the issue in the email during any discussions on the superintendent. That email did not factor into my vote. Quite frankly, I had completely forgotten about the email exchange. By now, I'm sure everyone has read or heard about the article in the HLN. Did anyone notice the HLN did not attempt to contact me? No quotes from me, other than from the email. No email messages, no phone messages, nothing attempting to contact me. If someone was reporting news, why not contact the subject of the article? Effort was made to contact the parent for the article, but apparently no one else with direct information. At least the effort would have been made, but that wouldn't make for sensational journalism now, would it? The article also insinuated via Mr. York that I had somehow coerced two other members, Mr. Barka and Ms. Lepore, to vote the way they did. Was either of them contacted to get their statements? Not in the article I read. I'll state for the record, I did not exchange emails or discuss with the quorum of the board, together or in sequence, outside of the multiple meetings where the board discussed this in non-public. Unfortunately, this will be a he-said-he-said, where the first one in the press usually wins. Unfortunately, this has served to necessarily impugn the integrity of two members of the board, who voted for their own reasons after the discussion on the third. It is certainly not fair to assume people follow me like sheep. It is just not the case. The HLN has a pending right-to-know request for board emails. I look forward to the follow-up story on what was gleaned from the information they obtained. So how has the board tried to move forward? The board has heard community input during meetings. The board has received emails from the public, and continues to receive emails from the public. The board has held two successive discussions on the superintendent's contract, two sessions on the September 17th meeting. Individual board members have met one-on-one with Dr. Cochran. There is only one way for this board to focus on moving forward across all of the district's business, to minimize the distractions. Therefore, I resign my position on the school board effective immediately. I have copies of my resignation for the board, superintendent, and school district clerk. I thank the citizens of Litchfield for the opportunity to serve for the past eight years. And I will leave. Michelle, that has a copy of the statement for the record. I will leave that, because that was the subject of the grievance. Thank you very much.
The chair, it's you.
I also have a comment to make that I would just like to clarify as well. No one from the Hudson-Litchfield News asked for my opinion, asked for my input, wanted to hear anything from me apparently, never spoke with me, never asked me if I was involved in any way, was influenced by anyone. And I would like to make sure that everybody understands that I vote my own mind. I will never allow anyone to affect the way I feel about a given topic. I will always use my own mind to vote. I have my own reasons, and I use those reasons when I vote. I did speak with Dr. Cochran, we had a very good discussion. I told Dr. Cochran what my reasons for my vote were, and he understands that. And that is all I'm going to say about this topic.
We need to, we have a few housekeeping clean, Stan. We need to get a vice chair. So we probably should, just in case you can't be around, we need somebody who can chair the meetings. So we need to get a nomination and somebody voted into the vice chair.
I nominate Derek Barka.
So I'll nominate John York.
I respectfully decline.
Okay. So we have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain. Three, one, zero. So on to correspondence.
There's lots.
Yeah, there were.
Ready for him, so.
Let's start from the top. There's one from Michael Coral, the school resource officer. He sent us an article about the, about the Lundy School System and the work they're doing there for safety.
We have one from Carrie Douglas. Do you have that one, Michelle?
Yes.
I have. There was one from Laura West.
These are all in support of Dr. Cochran.
Correct.
Send me Laura West's, please.
I will, yeah. There was also one from Todd and Jennifer Breedy.
That one too.
There was one from.
Bob Keating.
That one I know.
One from Tracy Capiolio. This one from Cecil.
One of the lawyers.
Yeah, I got the wrong hero.
Yeah.
This one from Michael Capiolio.
One from Tracy.
There was two that came to, went directly through, actually went to Michelle, I think, and then to Dennis. There was one from Great Peoples.
Yes.
And there was one from, it was unsigned, and we probably shouldn't enter it into, I don't think it should go into public, because the content probably wasn't appropriate, but it was from like the Coalition for a Brighter Future or something. But it was unsigned, so I don't think it should.
All the others that did come in were all in support of Dr. Cochran. I think that was all of them. I'll send those to you, ones you don't have. All right. Want to the approval of minutes? If you want to, we can start with the minutes from 9:17, which we pushed off to this week.
It has me listed as present. I wasn't there.
Excuse me?
It has me listed as present, I think. I wasn't, I wasn't at that meeting.
With us in spirit?
With you in spirit.
Is the board doing a policy that allows board members to participate electronically? There's something scrolling, we've got some point.
Motion?
I can't make it.
I'll make a motion, except the minutes I've written.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Minutes for the 24th of September.
Make a motion or approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Minutes for the 24th of September?
Make a motion or approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Three, zero, one. Community forum.
I just didn't want to interrupt anybody there. Jason Gert, 11 Perry Court. Oh, it got real quiet in here, real quick. Real quick, I know Dr. Dion's going to come with some perk information for you here shortly. You'll see a one lonely vote, no, on some math software. And I'd like to explain that for myself, anyway. She'll tell you, you know, what it's all about, and it's a supplemental piece of software to help improve some math skills in the middle school. And I don't like Band-Aids of that nature. I've long advocated that we have great need in our district for better math, and I don't think adding another piece of software or another supplemental thing is the way to go. I explained to her that I'd much more happily advocate scrapping what we do in math and starting over with a program that actually, in my opinion, works better, and not just in my opinion, but many professionals, such as Saxon Math. I think part of our problem is how we do math in this district. And rather than just continue to add on top, on top, on top, I think if we looked at what works best, and again, it's not just my opinion, and everybody has an opinion, but I'd much prefer putting resources towards something that works and getting it right than putting Band-Aid over it. With regard to Mr. Miller's comments, I'm kind of disappointed, actually, because, you know, he listed and he went through, he made a great point, actually, that his letter was from May of last year, yet there was no objections from this board at all with him participating. The board knew that letter was out there, clear violation of his oath of office. And he was allowed to continue to participate and participate and participate until it finally, you know, this, it did become public. And while I've found very few opportunities to respect Dennis Miller, at least he knew good enough the right thing to do was to resign, quite honestly, because he had no choice. But I am a bit disappointed that the board did not recognize this sooner. And so considering that Mr. Barka was the chair at the time, and it was his responsibility to recognize and bring that to the public and take action on it as chair, I would hope, Brian, and I, you know, what I know of you, you're a straight-up guy, and I don't think that would ever slip by you. I don't think you'd ever forget it. As Mr. Barka says, he did, he forgot about it. That's, what that was, separate from any vote for superintendent, that on itself was as egregious as it can get for a board member. It's a direct conflict of interest, and the only preparation for that is resignation or removal. Unfortunately, Mr. Barka didn't find it rose to the appropriate level to take action at that point. And that probably would have solved the whole uproar. And finally, and I know, I think I know what Ms. Lepore was saying when she made her comments, because it's what I've always believed, in that I come to my conclusions on my own through conversations with others and whatnot. And I know she didn't mean to say that she doesn't want to represent the people that voted for her. It's just, once she listens to the people that votes for her, she'll vote in the way she sees appropriate. Because it didn't sound that way, and I just wanted to make sure that, that it didn't come off the way you meant it. Is that?
I'll tell you what I meant, because it's probably best coming from me rather than you. What I meant was that I will always try to make the best decision for the children and the parents in this district. That's what I mean.
Fantastic. That's what I thought you meant. Thank you.
Laura Gandia, 3 Chamberlain Drive. I'm here with a couple of things. First, I wanted to express my unwavering support for Dr. Cochran in his position as superintendent. I have worked with him on numerous issues that came to my attention as a parent, and he has been nothing but professional, cooperative, helpful, maintained integrity, dignity in every aspect of every dealing that I've had with him. Also, at a professional level, I am a substitute in the school district, and I have seen him in the hallways, I have seen him interact with staff, I have seen him interact with students, and I can't say enough good about him. So I just wanted to let the members of the public know that, on both a professional and personal level, I support him greatly. And another thing is, everything that occurred over the past couple of weeks that occurred in public and non-public session has led to negativity and a negative perception of the school board, and I know myself and other members of the community are disappointed. Chairman Miller spoke of moving forward, and I know myself and other members of the community are curious as to how the board plans to move forward. I believe that the support for Dr. Cochran has been overwhelming, and I hope the board will reconsider the vote regarding Dr. Cochran and consider the voice of the community and its support of Dr. Cochran in moving forward. And the other thing I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, and actually, the community's attention, is there's been talk about court of ethics and violations and everything else like that, and people have asked me, well, what are they, what are people talking about? And as the school board knows, there is a court of ethics policy for the school board, which is policy number BCA. And one of those, and that's the court of ethics, and one of those listed is to support the superintendent and help him or her be as effective as possible. And again, I am hoping that the school board did that, and that they will continue to support Dr. Cochran and help him be as effective as possible. And another thing that I think needs to be brought to the attention of the public is, under the court of ethics, is to disclose any conflict of interest and abstain from voting on any issue if appropriate. So that's clearly stated in the school board policy, that you need to disclose any conflict of interest and abstain from voting on an issue if appropriate. Another part of the court of ethics policy is to refrain from using any board position for personal or partisan gain. And contained within that policy, it states, "If any board member feels that another board member has violated any provision of this agreement, that board member shall personally talk with the offending board member in an attempt to resolve the issue. If the attempt fails, the board member who feels that another board member has violated this agreement shall bring the matter to the attention of the entire board." And also for the board member conflict of interest policy, there is a policy number BCB that talks about nepotism, and I believe this is what's coming into play with Mr. Miller. And that clearly states, "The board will not employ any teacher or other employee if such teacher or other employee is the father, mother, brother, sister, wife, husband, son, daughter, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, sister-in-law, or brother-in-law, or the superintendent or any member of the board. If a conflict exists, the board member shall declare his or her interest and refrain from debating, discussing, or voting on a nomination or other issue." So I just wanted to put that out there, so that the public is aware of certain policies that the school board has, and hopefully the school board will, you know, adhere to those policies, and again, make the best decision for the school and the community with Dr. Cochran. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Tyler Matthews, 38-page road.
I'll echo a lot of the comments that were just made by both. Through this process, I've had three main concerns. Certainly, the bias that Mr. Miller had and has, that's seemingly been removed. It seemed three members for a period of time had information that they were making decisions on, that two others did not. That's a major concern, that you're not working with the same set of information. And the third concern I had is, it seemed after a handful of weeks, that it was finally determined that the actual no vote, which occurred on the 17th, truly didn't mean that that was the end of the discussion, it was just to table the discussion at that time. And if that were the case, that should have been very clear from the onset, and that certainly didn't seem to be the case up until the last handful of days.
That's not the case. That argument is not true.
Okay. Okay. It seems like we can have a little back and forth, so I actually have a few questions, if I may. When we had the opening which Dr. Cochran filled, I guess a few years ago, when did we post for it? When did, when did we reach out for a candidate? What timeframe?
December, January of, well, the board started working on it in the fall of Dr. Cochran's last year.
Fall.
The fall.
Which is now.
Well, we put together a committee and started, and we posted the job, I believe, in January, earlier than that?
It was before that, because Dr. Cochran was told to see, oh, I want to wait till all candidates are gone.
Right. And I think that the, the, the job was posted December, January, I think it was posted in December, and I think applications, we took applications until the, towards the end of January, at which point in time they went, a committee had been created by the board, and they started the process of reviewing the applicants.
What is the typical range when people begin to look for other employment in the school industry? Is this a very reasonable time of year where people might start doing that?
The, they're all, all teachers, all people under contract until June 30th.
So it would be reasonable for someone who may think?
So it would be reasonable, they're looking, they would begin, start looking probably after the first of the year, or, or their.
Now.
Well, Brian could probably answer that better than all of us. Dr. Cochran, when would you actually start, like, when would a superintendent start looking?
I'm sorry?
For his question, when would a, when do superintendents usually start looking for employment?
There are some positions to close this month.
So a question of the board members?
They'll be posted until February.
Because I don't want to ask Dr. Cochran specifically, I don't think that's fair. If you thought that your employment were ending this coming June, and the opening frame to look for employment happened to be the fall, would you probably begin to look for another job now?
Depends.
No? Depends?
Well, the answer to the question is yes. However, Dr. Cochran is under contract with the district until June 30th.
Understood. You might want to look for your next employment if you believe that you're no longer employed through then, or after then.
You, you might.
Okay.
At least keep your ears open.
I believe that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
With that being said, though, I think the board has a lot of respect for Dr. Cochran and the belief that he'll continue working in the same vein he has in the past.
Okay.
Under his contract.
Hi, Cindy Couture, 41 Stark Lane. What I want to say is that I am actually very disappointed to realize that this board no longer is a member of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. One of the most important things that I think any professional can do is to stay ahead of the curve and learn as much as you can and train as much as you can. Last night, the Budget Committee had a training, and even the veteran members who thought perhaps they had heard it all and knew it all, have to admit that they learned some things last night. One of the most important things that I think the New Hampshire School Boards Association does is, they have numerous training opportunities over the years, not only to go out and train and meet other board members and collaborate with them and hear some of the things that they're dealing with, but also you can have them come in and do training here. You are a very young board. You have very few years behind you, and I really think that that part of the New Hampshire School Boards Association can be a very valuable tool for all of you. I think some of the misunderstandings of the past weeks probably could have been mitigated by a little bit of training. The other thing they do offer is policy service. I know that one of the most difficult things to keep up with is the ever-changing legislature, which is also another piece, and the implications for policy, current events that change what happens in educational world, and again, policy changes there. Legislatively, we have great legislators, but the myriad of legislation that they have to weed through, they don't always see the finer pieces that are going to impact the school district, maybe not today, but maybe a year or two from now. So I really think that legislative piece, where you have an advocate that keeps you informed of any piece of legislation that's going to have an impact on the school district now or in the future, is a very important piece to also have that at your fingertips. The last thing is the enrollment projections. While it's not rocket scientist, science, and I've done them, Bill Spencer's done them, I have no doubt that Dr. Cochran can do them, is that really what your superintendent to spend a lot of time weeding through? So again, I think that there are so many offerings that the New Hampshire School Boards Association can offer you for the amount of dollars that you spend to belong to that organization. So I would encourage you, as you come upon your budget discussions, that you reconsider and seriously consider rejoining the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Thank you.
Can you allow me a brief comment? Cindy, I do agree with your analysis of the School Boards Association. I had, it took me about an hour to try and recreate the algorithm based on the handout last year, so I reached out to Mr. Spencer, who took him about 15 minutes to forward the document to me, plopped the numbers in and generated them down to the decimals, so we're okay on that. But I do agree with you, the School Board Association does have significant services that can be of help to, to every.
you had this year, it was more than enough to cover a, a year of subscription to the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Sometimes it can seem like the sky is falling when the budget is created and then finalized, and it's not as much as you had hoped, but certainly, like I said, small dollars when you consider the grand scope of things.
A point of information for the board right on cue is, the budget proposal from business does include rejoining the New Hampshire School Boards Association, I think. I'm just trying to find it now.
Yeah. You got it in there.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Robin Corville, Fornell Smith Court. It's been a little while since I've been here. I want to say, I was shocked when I found out that Dr. Cochran wasn't being rehired. I hadn't heard anything that led me to believe that he was not meeting his requirement, if not exceeding it. That doesn't mean that that didn't happen, I just hadn't heard it. So for me personally, it was very shocking as both an employee and as a community member. I was further shocked as the story seemed to unravel about the things that happened. I'm less concerned with all of that, I'm more concerned with, what does this mean for us as a community? Have a couple of questions. First one, point blank, is it a done deal? Is this argument, because I was under the understanding that the decision was made and it's done. If it's not, I think that the community deserves to know that there's a possibility that that's not the outcome that we have. My second question is, does the community input matter? Because I understand he had an evaluation that was put together by the school board, and he did at least acceptable on it, and I could be wrong, but that was my understanding, that there was nothing that came up that he had done incorrectly. And I don't know that there was any community piece to that. I certainly, as a community member, didn't have any piece to that as what, how I felt he was doing in our school district, how I felt our kids were doing in our school district. And I think that that's important information, and I'm not saying that we need to decide in one direction or the other, but I, I think that we need to remember that school district works for the community, that these are our schools, where our kids go to school, and what we think is important, whether it's in favor or against Dr. Cochran, it's important and it matters. And so I hope that that will be taken into consideration, because again, I've had community members come up to me and say, "What's going on? What happened?" And I honestly have no idea. I said, "I, I don't know what happened. I wasn't in non-public, we don't have that information, I don't know what to tell you." All I can say is, I'm a math and technology person, obviously, and I've liked a lot of things that he's done. I've liked the math and the technology that he's brought to our district. So as a parent, those are things that I liked. And I try to think about things, I'm not every parent, maybe other parents, he's, has made changes and they've said, "You know, I don't like that. That's not something I'm interested in." Everybody has their right to an opinion, but I, I think it's important that we hear that. So I guess the biggest question is, now that we've lost a school board member, what does that mean? Because it was a 3-2 vote. Who fills that seat? How does that seat get filled? Will there be another vote? If there even was another vote, would Dr. Cochran stay? These are all questions that I, I would hope we could answer, maybe not tonight, but in the near future, so that the community has some understanding of where we're going, because I still have two children in this district, and I don't want to start again and wonder who we're going to get, how it's going to work, what's going to happen, what changes are going to come down the road for my children. I want my children to be educated to the best that they can be, whoever that might be. Thank you.
I'll answer a couple of questions. First of all, community input always matters. I know, I read every single email, I take it into consideration with all the other information I have. As far as it being over with, I, I can't speak for Dr. Cochran, but last week we spoke about it. When I left that night, I did not think it was over. We even said, "We have until October to make a final decision." The motion was to instruct the chair to begin negotiations with Dr. Cochran on an extension. That's the motion that failed. It was handled badly by the board, or I'll take full credit for a portion of that, but in, in my opinion, it's not over. We'll have to talk as a board, but, and, I mean, after all this, well, it's obviously because of Dr. Cochran as well, it's been a pretty tumultuous couple of weeks, I'm sure. Might be.
Does anybody else want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll gladly chime in. First of all, as approved in our minutes today, Mr. York made a motion to extend the contract of the superintendent for one year from the current expiration date. Mr. Bork seconded the motion, failed 2 to 3, and Mr. York and Mr. Bork in favor. So unless Derek and Janine changed their minds and reopen it, the board instructed the chair, Mr. Miller, to provide Dr. Cochran with a letter that said he was not renewed and that his job would be terminated on June 30th. Most educated people would believe that's not open for a revote, that it's a done deal. Mr. Barker may want to change the facts, but facts are pretty, pretty evident out there. And, you know, hopefully, they'll want a discussion. There's no guarantee on that. With a new board member, that member could always bring something then forward and could reopen the discussion at that point in time. But we would have to post and start that process, and that may take more than a day to get built. So hopefully, later on tonight, the board will have a discussion that we can solve a lot of these issues and move forward. If not, then this falls at the feet of Derek and Janine, because Dennis is no longer here to accept his responsibility in this process.
So what I'm hearing from you is that at least discussion could be opened if either one of the two remaining board members chose to initiate that?
Me or Janine would have to open it up, because-
And that would have to happen in non-public, is that right?
No, could happen right now. They could make a motion right now, they could make a motion right now, and we could have a discussion and a vote right now. See, it's, it's not a discussion on Dr. Cochran, it's a discussion on the school board following its policies and procedures. And all it is, is open it up for a discussion, make a motion, and discuss it. And you voted up or down. Doesn't need to be in non-public, it can happen right here and right now. School members could have to defend their vote or not.
I don't think it needs to be in non-public, John, I agree, but I think on the circumstance and conversations we've had in the last month, I, I think it's best that, if, if there is a conversation, that's where it begins. And stop to say that it doesn't then become public, but I think only because of conversations that have taken place that we're probably better off.
Yes, Tom. I just wanted to clarify, because there seems to be some, some misunderstanding. The vote was taken, I'm assuming fairly late in the evening on Wednesday, September 3rd.
Yeah.
On the morning of the 4th, I received an email from Mr. Miller requesting a meeting at the end of the day on, on that day. We met at 4:30 on the 4th. He presented me with the written letter of notification that my contract had, that the vote had failed, and that the district would allow my contract to expire on June 30th, 2015. I'd like to thank you for your service to the district. We had a brief conversation about the rationale, which he indicated, was, the part of the rationale was philosophical differences in management style, was the, the explanation that he gave. I believe he was genuine in thanking me for my service, and I asked him if I could have a few days to notify staff in appropriate manner, which I did. I met with all the members of the administrative team that following Tuesday during the, the day, and that afternoon, I sent an, an email out to staff, which said, "Good evening, I hope that this email finds you well and that things are settling in for the 2014-15 school year. I am contacting you to inform you that this will be my last year with the Listfield School District, as the school board recently voted 2-3 not to extend my three-year contract. Please know that the work on the new student information system, the educator effectiveness plan, and the instructional unit development will continue as scheduled. I've greatly enjoyed the opportunity to work with the wonderful staff here in Listfield over the last two years and look forward to the remainder of this year. Best regards, Brian."
I guess in closing, I say, I hope, because I try to be optimistic, that when that discussion and this vote took place, maybe there wasn't some information that is now out there. And I don't know whether that information is going to sway anybody one way or the other, and I don't know that it should, because I voted you all into office, and that's the job that you have, is to look out for the education of my children and to take all the information in and make an educated decision on what should be done. I just don't know if you have more information now and you need to discuss it further, or if you had all the information that you needed at that time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Fallis, Eat My Clean. So I just hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I just want to say, I think there's enough back and forth that's happened at this point. I think as a community, we're done with it, so hopefully you're all done with it. I don't want to hear anymore of, "Well, he didn't believe this," or, "This was my impression," or, "He didn't, that wasn't his impression," because I don't think any of you know what was in each other's head. So I'm hoping we can all act like adults, put that aside, and move forward. I'd like to see the board start figuring out what happens next. Meet, decide, figure out whether all the additional information, like Robin was just saying, is there a difference? Revote, so that we can start with a fresh slate. I think we owe it to Dr. Cochran, and I think you owe it to the community. We need to figure out as a team, what is happening next for our students, and I think you need to do it quickly. I'm not saying that you need to rush through it and make any rash decisions, but you have parents worried about what is happening with this district, you have employees wondering where we're going next, and you have an employee, who's been a good employee, who now needs to decide what he's doing with his future. And like Mr. Matthew said, if that was you, and you knew you were losing your job as of June, you wouldn't be sitting back thinking, "Maybe I'll look for a job." You would look for one, because that's what responsible adults do. And Dr. Cochran appears to be a responsible adult to me. So he's going to be out there looking at viable, good job opportunities, and if we turn around and decide we should have kept him, shame on us, because if we take our time and sit on our heels, we may lose him. And I'm not saying that's the way the board's going to go, that's your decision. Like Robin said, we voted you in, or didn't vote you in, but you got in anyways, one way or the other. But either way, you're here and you're supposed to represent what is best for our children. So what's best for our children, in my viewpoint, is that we start moving on this so that we know what's happening and we can figure it all out.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Laura West, Fort Waterview Circle. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I really feel like I have to. I please ask you to revote. Open this up and revote. I think that you've done a wonderful job for our community. I'm out in the community at events all the time, and I hear nothing but wonderful things. People are super happy with him. If the teachers aren't happy, the community's happy with you. And I would just please ask you to, to relook, look at this again. And if you're, if you're still voting that way next week, fine, but really, you need to open it up and look at this again, because I think he's great. Thanks.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Laura Gandia, 3 Chamberlain Drive. I just wanted, because I know people are going to ask about the vacancy, now that one exists, and how that will be filled, and it's my understanding, it's governed by statute pursuant to your policy, which is RSA 19726 and RSA 67133, which basically states, in case of vacancy, the entire membership of the board have to agree on an appointment. And if the entire membership of the board cannot agree unanimously on appointing a new school member, then it goes to the selectmen. Upon application, of one or more voters in the district shall fill the vacancy, so existing until the next annual meeting of the district. So I believe that's how it's governed, and I know people are going to be wondering how that's going to be filled, that there'll be a special election. It's my understanding that there's not, that it's up to the board to nominate somebody, have unanimous vote, and then from there, if you cannot come to a unanimous nomination, it would go to the selectmen, who I believe could take application from somebody or seek through that process, and then they would fill that until the next meeting, which is in March. And I just wanted to do one more thing that I don't know if it's been done, but I really did wanted to apologize to Dr. Cochran, members of the community, of how you have been treated. I, I really think it's been awful, and my apologies to you.
Laura, what was the RSA again tonight?
It's your policy, BDC, and it says RSA 671 calling 33 and RSA 19726. And I have that if you want it.
Yes, I got it, thanks. Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on to new business.
Superintendent's comments?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted very quickly to deal with the issue that some people have been discussing, and that is the, the issue of the attribution of improvements to the school, results at the high school and, and in general, and clearly, the people most responsible for the improvement are the students, the teachers, the parents, the parents, the people who put in the work every day. Administration does their part, we try to support teachers, we try to arrange programs that will be the best benefit of students, we will, we try to use money to the best that we can. And money is an issue. We fund, well, the last year, the state data is available is 2012, 2013, I think it's about $1,400 less per student than the state average. In 1112, we lost $1.5 million out of the budget. If we were getting the state average right now, that would be a $1.8 million increase. We need resources, we do. We've been asking teachers to do more with less, year in, year out, and it's tiring. Does administration, including the superintendent, make a difference? Yes, when they do the job over a sustained period of time, they can make a difference. But if you want to look at, at where the results came from, students, teachers, parents, parents, staff, there, there is a role for building administration and SAU administration, but it all comes down to those four factors, buy-in, learn.
Thank you. I missed your next line. Moving on to new business. Do you want to go into comments first?
Yeah, this is where we're going to, the salary guidelines, and then the building security discussion, so there's, Mr. Brent Markowitz is too.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
Yep, on the new business salary guidelines.
Was that the non-affiliated one?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I again appreciate the accommodation.
You will explain St. Alfred's, all right?
I will be, I'll have milk and cookies available outside. On the new business salary guidelines, as you recall, last year, the, the, when putting together the salary and benefit budget, which purposely is late in the schedule for presentation to the board, the easiest part for the SAU to calculate is the LEA contractual salary, which is just simply, and I'm oversimplifying it because I don't actually technically do it, Holly doesn't, so, but it's a matter of just taking the, the information from the salary schedule and putting it into the system and running personnel budget. The area that causes us, and did cause us a lot of hot burn, I guess, for lack of a better term, last year was the unaffiliated groupings that we have within the district, because we do need some direction from the board so that we can plug that information into the personnel budget, and not to get too technical, but that has to be completed first before we can then send it over to the general budget. So it's a two-step process, and if it, if certain protocol isn't followed, it can really mess- I will be, I'll have milk and cookies available outside. On the new business salary guidelines, as you recall, last year, the, when putting together the salary and benefit budget, which purposely is late in the schedule for presentation to the board, the easiest part for the SAU to calculate is the LEA contractual salary, which is just simply, and I'm oversimplifying it, because I don't actually technically do it, Holly doesn't, so, but it's a matter of just taking the information from the salary schedule and putting it into the system and running personnel budget. The area that causes us, and did cause us a lot of hot burn, I guess, for lack of a better term, last year was the unaffiliated groupings that we have within the district, because we do need some direction from the board, so that we can plug that information into the personnel budget, and not to get too technical, but that has to be completed first, before we can then send it over to the general budget. So it's a two-step process, and if it, if certain protocol isn't followed, it can really mess up our numbers, for, for lack of a more detailed explanation. So Holly has done a wonderful job putting together a summary for you, and I'll let Holly explain it to you, but it summarizes the different categories that we've got relative to the non-affiliated, and some general information about the groupings and the class associated with potentially the step increases for those, each of those. Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. On the FY260 non-affiliated salary proposal that you see in front of you, I broke out all the non-affiliated classifications of employees, so anybody that's not part of the LEA. The first four groups, the admin assistants, the custodians, the paraprofessionals, I'm sorry, five, food service, and professional non-exempt employees are all on step schedules. The next two groups, the monitors and tutors, the monitors get a flat rate of pay right now, $11.48, tutors, very. Then we have two groups, professional exempt, and the administrators and directors that are paid salary. So we, what we wanted to put together and were looking for was some guidance as to where you were looking to go for salary increases. On this sheet here, you will see a 3% increase for employees that are not on the step schedule, and then the employees that are on the step schedule, this would be moving anyone up a step, except for employees that are at the top step. And then we have the difference for each group, so what it would cost us to do that. Then I also put another scenario on here, if we weren't going to look at 3% or going with the step schedule, our proposed general 1% increase for everybody, and then the difference in the cost of that. I also put on here the total employees that we have in each class, for those that we have step schedules for, the employees that are at the top steps, and the number of employees that receive longevity in each classification. So we're really looking for some guidance as to where you guys would like to go. As Frank said, we really need to get a number, so we can start moving forward with the personal budgeting. We have to have that before we can move forward with the salary and benefits piece that we have to present at the end of October.
My first question. Well, I'm just looking at administrative assistants, but I think the number's wrong as far as your 1% increase. Because 3% is $1,800, and 1% would be $3,600.
Oh, because the, people at top, oh, the people at top get the 1%?
Yeah. You would have to see the entire calculation, because the 3% is not calc, we back out the longevity, because that's an aside to, so in other words, if someone were to get a 3% increase, they'd get an increase on their hourly rate, not including longevity. So that's why the numbers might look a little bit different here, but we back out, excuse me, the longevity amount. We don't calculate, because that would be compounding, if you will, the longevity, whatever that rate turns out to be.
So they're the only ones that get longevity? They're the only ones that are entitled to longevity?
No, they're not.
Nope. Anybody on that column, fiscal year, 16 employees receiving longevity, the district has a step, you have a step scale for these classifications, as well as in their longevity stipend for 10 years of service to the district.
So if they get to the top step and they have 10 years, they get, I mean, assuming it's after their first year at the top step, right? So if the top steps...
Right.
Yeah, so they hit the top step, they get that salary period, and the next year they get whatever the longevity is. Is it, do you know if it's a fixed amount or a percentage?
I think it's a fixed, it's a fixed amount.
It's based on, in addition to an hourly rate of pay, if you have 10 to 14 years of service, 25 cents is added to your hourly rate, 15 to 19 years of service, 35 cents is added to your hourly rate, and 20-plus years of service, 60 cents is added to your hourly rate. And you can only get the longevity if you're on a step schedule and at the top step, with 10 or more years of service.
Seems like a pain to manage. I'm glad you said it.
Yes.
But I will tell you that one of the things that I know the superintendent has, already talked to us about this as well, is this is administrative nightmare, to try to align this in a systematic approach, you know, try to program it into your system without getting too detailed, it's just, so, we've had some discussion that, certainly not during budget development, because we got our hands full, but I think, I think it will be certainly a goal of ours at the SAU level, to come back with some recommendations on some changes, because it really, and Holly coming on board, we didn't want to scare away the first 90 days, so we didn't let her see all of this. But it really is, I mean, we sat down trying to put all this together, and every group has a different little nuance to it, so...
How many steps on the 15?
There are 11.
11?
I have, yeah, there's 11 on the parents, 11 on food service, 11 on custodians, 11 on admin assistants, and 11 on the SAU staff, so it looks like 11 is consistent.
I'd reference the board, what we do is get rid of longevity, and then do what we've done with teacher salaries, drop the first step, make up the new 11 steps, so everyone gets their step increase, and then make a 12 step that includes whatever that top rate is, the 65 cents per hour.
Yep.
And then that's, that's it. It's a standard step schedule, there's no more longevity, and it's easier to manage.
It has to be adjusted, because if you look at, you know, we've got employees that are in food service and in administrative area assistance that have been here for 15, 20 years, so then they max out, and then if you make some adjustments to the, I mean, it just, it's...
I want to see it so no one's losing money.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a new top step that includes whatever that plus 65 cents is for that hourly rate, plus maybe 2% if it's going to be a raise.
We'll definitely come back with some recommendations on that. Just, you know, Holly and Barbara and I have had some significant conversations about this in the, in the last two weeks, when I've had nothing else to do with my time, and really looked at, at how the salary scales and the historical practices of placing people have really mitigated against, in some cases, attracting and retaining good employees. The current guidelines allow us now the ability to only grant two years of experience when someone comes in, even if someone has 15 years of experience at a higher level than that. We're supposed to, you know, attract the people that we want and retain them, and I think quite honestly, the town of Litchfield has a lot of very talented people, who we've been fortunate to attract and keep, and they do good work, but they can quite easily go elsewhere. And so we ended up with this, this annual process of turning over people, because we have 11 years, you know, 11 steps, we have different categories, it's difficult to explain, you can't really predict whether your salary's going to go up or not, because you're not under a contract. And it's also difficult to communicate, when you take, you know, seven, eight, nine votes in public, with everybody getting 1.3% instead of one vote, it sounds like you're giving away a ton of money, but you're not. So in terms of what we hope to do between now and hopefully Christmas, will be to come back with some firmer recommendations about, you know, that bigger structure. But in the interim, for budgetary purposes, we kind of need, I think Frank, could we say a ballpark figure that would, that would be somewhere in here? Or do you need a specific number? I'll do respect, Mr. Superintendent, we need some specifics, because that's what happened last year, is we, just to give you the kind of fail-safe, what happened, we got budget development all done, based on where we thought the board was going, and then once you cross over into budget development, it's a one-time cross. And if you need to cross again, you've got to start over, right from scratch. So I think last year, not to scare Holly, but I think we actually crossed over at least three times, because of the changes. And that makes it very difficult, because it's, you're constantly crossing over, which you don't want to do from a, from a budget control standpoint, you know, because every time we cross over, we have to reconcile. We have to make sure the numbers that we took out of, that we crossed from personnel budgeting into the general budget development are the same numbers. So we're constantly double-checking it. So I, you know, I would prefer to have some, some guidance from the board that you will feel confident that we can cross over into budget development. We won't cross over right away, but I think, given that, you know, there's a learning curve here, a little bit for Holly, working with our payroll coordinator to get it right. So it does take a little bit of time to make sure that we, you know, again, don't forget, 75% of this budget is salary and benefits, so that's our biggest challenge. So we just need that guidance earlier than later, I guess, is what we're asking for.
Is what I just described realistic to do in this time period? Is basically come up with, not come up with a new salary schedule, but take the existing salary schedule, make step two the new step one, add a new step, adjust step 11 to be 3% above, and then add a step 12 that is, encompasses that longevity? Is that something that's doable, or is that not doable in the timeframe we're looking at?
I can do that.
Is doable? Does the board like that direction?
Couple of questions. I do, I hear what you're saying, to try to get there.
Get rid of longevity.
So is your recommendation to give them a step or a 3% increase, meaning that they're going to get one or the other? Is that what you're asking us?
Right now, the steps are approximately 3% apart.
So the board, I'd have to go find the minutes, strongly endorsed last year the step process, did we not? Did we not endorse going back to the step process and keeping the step process as the process? And that if the steps needed to be addressed, that the administration would then bring us the necessary process, hence your suggestion there, on that. And so I think that, I think you would have a much easier budget process if we just went with the steps and/or fixed the step process in the next week or two.
But not all classifications are on step. That's why we had the 3%, not all these classifications are on steps.
Which ones aren't? Monitors, tutors, professional exempt, and administrators, no, they're on steps, right?
They're not.
They're not? So the bottom four aren't?
The monitors and tutors are the only ones that aren't on steps, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Monitors, tutors, professional exempt, and administrators, directors are not on the steps.
Yeah, but I think professional exempt and administrator directors, isn't that a discussion that the board has with the superintendent that creates that, or is it, your now, your recommendation being that we just make it part of the budget process? Because, you know, we were, well, we had many discussions about, about that process of how the board would like to see that.
Last year, we talked about addressing some historical inequities on a 1% pool. You know, I think we're at the point now where, where we've done much of that, and some sort of consistency across everybody who gets, you know, an evaluation of X or higher. I know it's one of the areas that the board has talked about, or just a, just a straight...
Well, I think that what the board has been pretty adamant about over the last two or three years, is that you don't just walk in the door and get a 3% raise. That's what the board's been pretty adamant about. I mean, you know, if you had somebody who was doing an outstanding job, then you should have the flexibility to award said person. At the same time, if you had somebody who wasn't doing an extraordinary job, and more marginal on the basis, that it was. I mean, I think that the, the, my recollection of the conversations were, we, we understand the need for what you're asking for, because you need a number, a 3% number, but the fact is, is that it seems to me that we're going backwards, in the sense that we're just going to wake up, and people are going to wake up one day, and all of a sudden, they're going to have a 3% bump in their salary, in or irrelevant of what their review may say. And that's, that's not the wish of the board that it's been in the last few years.
But if I may, through the chair, is I think your point, Mr. York, is correct, that you talk, you know, we need a number to place in the budget, for budgetary purposes, and we need to do that. That doesn't mean that each, I think, then what you're talking about is the process in which, performance appraisals, where you, whether the board goes merit, merit increase, or whatever the process is. But again, I think here this evening, we're not asking for the process to be defined, we're more asking for us to give us, give us some parameters, so we can develop the budget in which then...
And the monies can be spread...
However, the board determines that is, again, we need, we need a number, so that when we go through presentations, and we come to you at the end of this month with the salary and benefit, again, being 75% of your budget, that's, that's a budget number. That, you know, how that, that figure, how that amount of money is distributed, again, is up to the board's discretion, given what you're pertaining to direction.
Actually, it's not the board's discretion, the board, the board's discretion on this is the guidelines...
That's what I'm saying, the guidelines.
How, but as far as the amount of money and the process, yes, we should, we can easily say, you know, start with 3%. I mean, I mean, I guess in retrospect, it's going to, it's going to be how the rest of the numbers, and looking at some of the other reports, there's quite a few dollars that are being, being looked at. So, you know, I, I think you're going to have a budget process through the school board. But I mean, the key that, I guess what I, what I hear you're asking for, Frank, is what you don't want is for, in a month, for the board to make a decision that says, no, reduce it to 2%.
I was going to suggest starting with 2%. I mean, because...
Well, I guess, let me, a point of clarification is, I'm not overly concerned with the administrators' directors, because as we did last year, we put that into a bucket, if you will. So it's everything above, to be honest with you. Because that's, that's more work, there's more in that, in that area that, if we spread it out, because it does impact benefits as well. We can do a quick calculation on the administrators' directors that we did last year, and then as you get further down the budget process, you can change that. That's not... I didn't want to minimize the importance of directors, administrators, but from a budgetary standpoint, everybody above that is, as you can see, the numbers are bigger. So it obviously creates more work for us, and to get, get it more accurate, we'd rather do it individually than do it as a, as a global bucket.
I guess my personal guidance is to fix the steps up top, raise, basically add a new top step to include longevity, speaker longevity, and that'd be our basis there, and then an X percent for administration directors, you know, to use that Dr. Cochran's discretion. I'd even leave it at 3% personally. I know they've gotten, they've only gotten one the last two or three years. We've always used the economy and budgets as a reason. It's not an issue anymore, I think, that we need to pay our administrators. I personally advocate for 3%. Monitors, tutors, professionals, I don't, I don't know what percentage we used for those ones.
Again, we used, we put the 3% down, being consistent with what a step increase is for those other classifications, so that's why we just use 3. It can be, again, at the discretion of the board, at direction of the board. Why don't we do that? Why don't we rework the steps to drop the low, the lowest, make a new top?
Eliminate longevity.
Eliminate longevity, and then we will come back with, with...
And are we moving people, are we moving people to the eight-and-a-half-hour day?
I don't think this is... I don't think this is a conversation we want to have tonight, quite honestly.
I'm guessing it's going to be hot before we're going to vote on it.
Sometime in the budget season, so...
If you want us to plot out an eight-and-a-half-hour day at current rate... Well, this is, this is my, this is the dilemma I have with what you're, what you're doing. You have people who are working five hours. Federal law says that they're supposed to have a 30-minute, a 30-minute break, but you're paying them for five hours, and they're leaving. I guess maybe, I don't know, but I don't believe schools have an exemption to federal law, especially payroll law. And, and the fact that we are paying people for 40 hours that are working 37 and 1/2 hours, I think is something that needs to be solved at the board issue, so. We've had the discussion, it was, the discussion was that it would be part of the next budget season, and yes, we've had a few other things on our plate that we've created, but at the same time, it was a direction that came out of the board... But at the same time, it was a direction that came out of the board through the last budget season and that, in that process, so. You know, personally, I don't have a problem with three percent and the steps. I think it's fair. You know, I think the board, again, was adamant about moving back to our step process. Again, I think if you're going to be making changes to the steps and you're going to be getting rid of the longevity and other changes like that, then you might as well make a full sweep of everything and roll it all into one, one, one quick change. It goes into effect July first to next year. And that's just one man's opinion.
Makes sense to roll it once.
You want a motion? What do you want, a motion?
Yeah, I do want a motion. Yeah, absolutely.
I will, I will give a motion that, that we will accept the plan as presented today with the recommendations that the board has given you and the direction we've given you. And you'll come back to us in three or four weeks and hopefully we won't ask you to change it.
Second, I think through the chair, I would want, I personally would want more of a definition as to what you're looking for. If you're looking for us to change the workday schedule, that's a whole other conversation.
I think that's a, we don't have to have that conversation now. But I think, it has been coming for July first, right? I think, I think this motion is just for this, right? Just for the salary schedule?
Yes, that's for the salary.
Okay, good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not making a motion. However, I will be beating that drum consistently, sir.
I second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained. Four zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other piece of my presentation is under new business, I'm sorry, not new business. Older unfinished business, and it is under policy E C A B dash R. Buildings and grounds access guidelines. The board has heard a lot of conversation over the past few weeks regarding the implementation of the new FOBs identification badge access system. And again, I think there is, given the amount of time that it took to do the actual physical installation of the equipment, we get kind of behind a little bit. But this is an attempt to bring some general guidelines to the board's policy relative to access control, key control, badges, so on and so forth. And again, it's draft form. I would welcome input because again, we were trying to bring, and I'll go over very briefly with you, trying to align it to current board policy. Basically, the guidelines are just that. It's to bring everybody to an understanding of the importance of having guidelines for the badges and access control. The badges, we have distributed badges to all staff, but we need, we need the board's support that badges are to be worn by all employees all day, every day school is in session. Some general guidelines regarding the badges, that they're not transferable. And if they are to leave, if they were to leave a badge at home, they need to check in at the front desk to receive a day badge, if you will. In light of everything that's been going on with some of the other surrounding schools, you know, we've kind of stepped up the security and this process allows us to step up the security as well in the school buildings. You know, we're kind of cleaning up the guidelines regarding visitors entering the school. And we will be issuing school badges to visitors that are not just the sticky, but it would be the actual badges that we all have as staff members, that visitors will be wearing one of these as well. Just again, I'm going briefly through this, so please stop if you have any questions. Monitoring of school buildings, that is important that if anybody notices anyone in the building not wearing a school issued badge. We talked about badge replacements. We talked about the benefit of the software program that we can disable badges within a moment, a moment's notice of that occurring. Normal access hours, I will slow here a little bit because this has been a pretty open discussion amongst administrators and staff and more specifically, coaches here at C H S as to when they can and cannot get in the building. We've got to maintain some control over the building in the morning, as you've heard in the past. The facilities directors have a protocol to go around the building, check doors, check the boilers, certainly in the winter time, make sure they're fired up, electricity is working. We've had no leaks overnight. There's been no entry, broken window or a door, jar. So they have a safety protocol that they go around the building each and every morning. So it's important that prior to staff coming in and be allowed to come into the building, that those safety protocols are completed by the facilities folks. So we've established basically a Monday through Friday for each of the three schools. As you can see, C H S is a little bit earlier, so that no one will have access prior to six AM and they'll have access to the system, to the school until ten PM at C H S. G M S and L M S is six thirty AM to ten PM. And I'm going to pause there and see if there are any questions for that, just so you understand. Again, basically that if the badges from the staff will be able to open up the doors at that particular school, six AM at C H S and G M S, six thirty.
I'm looking at the spreadsheet that has the grid of access, basically.
Did you get ahead of me?
Yeah, I got ahead of you. It says we have access. Do we get new badges for that? Because I don't think our, our old ones won't work, right? I have one of the, I have my original one from three years ago.
That won't work.
Won't work. Do you need a new one? Where do I see you get a new one?
I just want to see it.
I thought it was a badge. I thought it was just an ID badge. No, it's, yeah, right now it's an ID badge, but now they're FOBs.
Mr. Barker has gotten ahead of my presentation, but that's okay.
I'm sick of ringing the bell.
He's just, he's just-
We're not even on here.
That's the thing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It was just an ID badge.
So why don't we go to this spreadsheet?
Hey, does this mean our meeting is going to end at ten PM?
No, it's-
We can still get out. Yeah, you can get out, you just can't get in.
This is going to, yeah.
But I like where you're going.
The spreadsheet, the spreadsheet attached to this is, basically what it does is it was our attempt, knowing that this is not the answer to all, because there are so many different variations of need relative to entry into the building. But again, the overall goal here is to maintain some sense of security of the building, certainly on weekends and nights after a particular time. As you can see, we started right with the S A U and there are two, just to go through the columns real quick, by position, whether there's a key, a key will be provided and what that access for that key will provide also to that individual. Then ID badge, ID badge again is the FOBs, it works as an identification badge as well as a FOBs at the FOB entry points for the three, three schools. And then again, we tried to, again, assign different variations. I think we came up with the first time we tried doing this, about ten different variations. But as you can see, school board members will be issued FOBs, identification badges, which will, you'll be able to gain access to the building here, ten AM through ten PM. And we would ask, and I kind of, in a short time, went back and forth on this, is we could do all three buildings, but it's important during the day that you, you sign in at the front desk as anybody else that's not permanently assigned to that building. So in case of emergency, we know you're there. And that would hold true for anybody that's, that's on a twenty-four seven, if they enter a building, just to sign in so that we know you're there. But as you can see, the, the key control is maintained with custodial staff, grounds, maintenance, and school principals. And we can even restrict as to the access. And a lot of the, the school principals said, no, I don't want all three schools. I just want my school. But we did give them access during the regular day from a principal to all three buildings, six, six AM to ten PM. Because a lot of times we travel amongst buildings, so it's important that they have some access there to go in. So this is our attempt, again, to bring some general guidelines and some procedures in place so that if someone does need a badge, that Holly, Ms. Messenger is, is going to be equipped to take this information and centralize the information so that we put it right in the personnel file. We keep it on file so we know who has access and who's, who has a badge, who has keys. And that, all that control is with one individual at the S A, S A U, so.
So I don't see teachers and other people listed on here? Am I missing?
That would be listed on the school staff. Yeah.
Frank, why are the coaches here to have access till two AM?
We just had Saturday night, I think it was the, I believe it was the football team came back after eleven o'clock. So, and the access points, that's where we're going to constantly be kind of messing with this is that we can actually, with coaches, only give them access to one of the access points, even though there are four here at the high school. We'll give them access to one, which would be the rear. And they have to maintain the security as well. They have to disarm and rearm the security. So it's a question of, I guess that they have some games that really, they're not back till twelve, sometimes almost one o'clock in the morning. They need to come back and get in the locker room with the kids, grab their stuff and do whatever it is that they, they need to do. So it has, that hasn't been an issue about them coming into the building. The issue is that we need to, now that we have this system in place, is to actually control when they can. And those will be season specific. So if this is issued to a coach that is not a permanent member of the Litchfield staff, we will actually disarm that access point, that ID at the end of the season. So there will be some coordination between the athletic director here at C H S and the S A U relative to those, those access times.
I would certainly hope, especially at that time of morning, that they're not by themselves.
Well, that's, that's our concern, is that anyone coming into the building, we wrestled with, there were, there were a number of teacher requests for weekends to come in on a particular, you know, we want to come in on weekends and we'd love to have that ability to have a custodial staff here on the weekends. And the problem is, if you have one person entering a building, you know, of this size and you've got alarms, you've got, some of our buildings, I know, L M S, they, they actually shut down and lock down the electricity, the heat's off during the winter. It's a very different building during the weekend than it would be Monday through Friday, obviously, during the school year. So raises some great safety concerns, you know, and then again, you know, if they let somebody in the building and all of a sudden, you know, who's in charge of making sure that the building's locked down when they leave? And there's just a whole slew of security issues that we wrestled with it. We looked at all the pros and cons. And we did give an option, if a teacher needs to come in on a weekend through our school, do facilities direct, they can just put in a request that I would like to come in next Saturday. So there has to be some plan forward on that, not just spontaneous coming in.
I have a quick question. On page one up to of the E C A B code, item four, during vacation periods, all doors to school buildings shall be locked, except the main entrance to allow for deliveries, et cetera, to the office.
Right. We actually are going to be putting in, Michelle is our policy guru. We actually took a very different tack this summer that we had, we followed the same protocol that we would any, any school day during the school year, during the summer. Because if you think about it, we have summer school going on with students. We have extended school year going on from special education department. We had summer camps going on in this building with students. So we followed pretty much the same protocol and will need to make that change, recommend that change. We, we knew that it was, that stated that way, but again, we, we didn't want to leave doors open to the building that anyone could just come walking in.
Right. And that's, that's what it sounds like to me when I read it. It sounded like, well, a front door will be open and is there going to be somebody here or is it somebody UPS can come and drop stuff?
You know, at L M S, I mean, somebody come in that front door and you won't see them. You know, here at C H S, maybe a little bit differently, but again, they're busy in there with vacations. They could only have one person in there. And to have that door available, you know, we have, we have a full custodial staff here during the summer. In fact, we have additional, you know, if it's a loading dock issue, somebody can go cover that, unlock the door. So we, we felt, we erred on the side of blocking that front door down. Came with some, now all of a sudden you had buzz people in, which during the summer, we kind of left those doors open. But I know the director of special education had a conversation with me and was concerned about having extended school year students in the building and having public access at the same time, so.
Make a motion to approve, approve the draft for E C A B dash R?
Are you sure you don't want to bring that back for, do you want to do the first and second?
Oh, yeah, for first reading. Sorry, I thought that was just, I thought it was just-
No, no, I'm just, I'm just asking. It's your discretion.
Yeah, no, for first reading.
For second?
Second.
You have a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Four zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have to look at the other one as well? Or is that just, is it, was that just there for reference, the E C A B? Nothing changed there, right? Was that just for ref, or, no, there's changes.
Nothing's changed in those policies as of yet.
Okay.
Yes, it was more reference at this point, but we will, now that you approved the guidelines-
Now you have to go back.
Yeah, we have to go back and make sure that the policy aligns with the guidelines, even though it sounds kind of backwards. But we tried to make the guidelines fit the system as well.
Okay.
Is that all you have, Frank?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, thank you. So we go back up top to school board comments? Any?
Again, I think the, the community has strongly voiced their concern with the action of the board. I can only, again, hope that the members of the committee who felt so the need not to follow school board policies when they made their decisions, that if this had been a student or this had been an employee of the district, we as school board members are responsible for upholding our policies first. And while I understand wholeheartedly the desire of three, now two members to use what they believe to be fair processes, fact remains, they violated numerous school board policies. A student would have been suspended. An employee may not have been reaffirmed, may even have been terminated. Tonight, we saw our chairman resign. And this all occurred because people elected to follow their own process, not the processes that have been set up before them by previous school board, school boards or through New Hampshire School Board Association and many other districts that follow the same rules. This is an easy process. If a school board member has had any conversation with any employee of the district on any subject, they have no authority on that subject, nor can they use that information to determine a course of action. I don't want to read through ten more policies again to make a point. But hopefully, when we get to the end of the night, through all this process, that we can move forward in a correct way, solve this issue, get the district refocused on what they're supposed to be focused on, kids learning, teachers teaching, and the school board staying out of the newspapers. I felt very bad about my part in violating some policies, which says, school board members shall support all votes of the school. However, I also took an oath to uphold and make sure that all school board members followed all policies. And when they elected not to, the only recourse is to make that recommendation to them in a very strong way. And I did that. I did that in this room. As much as Mr. Miller wants to deny, he didn't have an opportunity- We had, we stress following of the policies. Hopefully, we can do that. On a sidebar note of those policies, I noticed that we do have scheduled the administrators of the three schools coming to talk budgets in, next week? Is that when the principals are on? Can we put to bed with a conversation with our principals? Can they come prepared to inform the board what is wrong with our present dress code policy? And if nothing, can we revert back to the policy we have at all three schools so that we can put that issue to bed? Or can they bring us enough information that says, "We need to have a," we need to have a, some dialogue on it as a school board?
to get back to the board on how they were going to address it. Um, I contacted her, asking if, I really don't think there are huge issues with GMS and LMS. Uh, I mean, the board could correct me on that, but this is, I thought this is primarily a, a CHS issue and primarily a leggings issue.
And yoga pants.
Yoga pants, sorry, thank you. I, I corrected. Um, she asked if she could have an additional week and come back and talk to the board a week from tonight on the eighth, and, uh, mister, I requested that, and Mr. Miller, as board chair, agreed, so we have it on next week's agenda.
So we can, good, put that to bed. Okay.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but, 'cause I, I was hoping to move forward and not have to drag this on and on and on and on, but to address Mr. York's concerns, the way it actually happened was, staff reached out to me, I, I didn't reach out to them, I didn't engage conversation, they reached out to me, I listened. At the very next board meeting, the immediately following board meeting, I brought the concerns to the full board, listed them, gave examples of the concerns, and let everyone know about them. So everyone had the same information, it wasn't like I was keeping stuff in my head. Um, no one asked that behalf of all conversations, the concerns were immediately dismissed, which is fine, but the way it was handled was that it was immediately brought to the board and it was erased. Um, is the ideal way to do it? No, but I, people brought my concerns, I listened to them, informed the board of those concerns. If the board decided to listen, they now will listen, but that's what happened, and hopefully that can be the end of it, and we can move on and be done with it.
I'm sorry. I'm going back and forth on it, I think, uh, there are plenty of things that I would like to say, but I don't think anything that I would say would be helpful. Um, I agree the board has to move forward. I think we have to deal with this issue, like to deal with it tonight, and I want an end to it after that. I think, uh, there's been plenty of mudslinging, plenty of, um, policy violations by Mr. York.
Actually, none by Mr. York until the two other board members violate it.
Excuse me, so things don't go the way you like, and so then you feel that you are obliged, and I, I disagree with you that I violated board policy, however, um, among our policies and code, uh, BCAA, it's not surprising other board members or district staff in public, nor engaging in personal attacks. Not speaking outside of board meetings against any majority decision which was reached in good faith, nor take any private action that undermines board decisions. So I'll just put that up there. I have nothing else to say, and I think we should, and I think we should just put this to bed until we have non-public.
I think my only comments are, I'd like to publicly, I, I know some board members have differences and, um, different thoughts, but I, I'd like to publicly thank, um, Mr. Miller for his service. Um, I think it's unfortunate, um, that he did resign. I think he brings a lot to the school board and a lot to, uh, the community, so I'd like to thank him for his service. And with that, I agree with Ms. Lepore and, and with Mr. Barker and Mr. York, while somewhat the other, like, hopefully that, after this public part of the meeting, that we can sit down and, um, redirect our energies and efforts and start focusing on what we need to focus on. Thank you.
I believe that brings us to PERC.
I believe that's a consent agenda, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, on PERC, I wanna, um, respond actually to, uh, Mr. Garrett's comments about the, the math piece. What did he say? I wrote it down. Um, he spoke out that he was against this software because it's supplementary, and it's a Band-Aid. Um, I, I disagree, this is a, um, this software goes along with the new course that we added under Dr. Cochran's leadership. Um, we added a whole new second course for math in seventh grade, um, on top of the existing math standards to kind of enforce math at that level so that we can better prepare our students. Um, this software is a, a good piece of software that helps, um, supplement that course. I know my, this is a, it's a, it's software online to, you know, practice math facts, practice equations, and practice stuff over and over and over again. Um, I know similar types of software, um, extra math, I'm sure, I know, um, Mr. Bork's son uses extra math and, um, uses it very successfully. Um, my kids use extra math and use it very successfully. Um, they, my son comes home excited about it, wants, can't wait to get home and do it, so I mean, um, if this software can do similar things, then I'm, I'm all for it. Um, so I, I think it's a good thing.
If I may piggyback on that, um, that's precisely our intention, you'll notice in my note, excuse me, that I, um, specified that the software allows for remediation for those students who need to strengthen their foundational skills. It provides additional review and support for students for, um, current topics from the classroom, and also provides enrichment for all students, including those students who are, um, have mastered the classroom curriculum and are, um, able to go more deeply into the curriculum. The other thing that I would point out is that this is not, in my view, and the view of the rest of the PERC committee, a Band-Aid, it is an integral part of the program. As you all recall, we adopted a brand-new math series for the middle school through Algebra II, actually, the big idea is math, um, and we did not choose the program that, um, was referred to tonight. It has its strengths and weaknesses, as all programs do. We felt that the program that we chose and have since purchased has more strengths than other programs, and so, um, it's not a Band-Aid. We have a brand-new math program that has many, many strengths, it's aligned to our new adopted curriculum framework, and, um, this, it has digital components, which also includes some remediation and some enrichment, um, but they are around classroom topics. This software, because of its adaptive nature, which means that it will go at, it will present math problems at whatever level the student is successful at, and then the increase in, in its challenge as the student is ready for it. If the student gets so many wrong, it stays at that level, presents material in another way, it includes tutorials, so the student isn't just, you know, answering flashcards or problems, there are tutorials and, uh, hints and, and that kind of support built in to the system. We also are not committed to the program, uh, beyond one year. I always consider the first year or two actually a pilot. We'll be assessing it through PERC at the end of that time, just as we do with other of our programs and materials. So we vetted very carefully several of them. Um, actually, I should tell you now that we'll be looking for a, uh, software, uh, program, uh, the same type for the elementary school. We have used extra math, we may decide, um, but our license was up for that, and it was a, a server-based license. We're looking for a web-based license, which gives us more flexibility and, uh, more power to the program, and so, uh, we may end up with extra math again, we may, uh, end up with Ten Marks, which also has an elementary component, and many of our summer school students used it both during summer school and at home. We, uh, the company offered for parents, people to use the, the software, uh, over that period of time, so this will be an ongoing process with the other schools.
And I may have missed this, so I apologize if you said it, but does Ten Marks have a web-based license?
Yes, yes.
Or so we have that?
Yeah, for $20 a student, um, the, there is a comparable, what I would say is a relatively comparable program that is $49 a student.
What's the difference?
Um, there's not a lot of difference. For math is basically one of the differences.
This seems like this is, this is the age group where the math, kids start to struggle a lot, significantly.
Fourth, and then middle school.
Yeah.
Yep.
I got a motion to approve the PERC recommendations?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Four zero zero.
I actually think this is backtrack, 'cause I skipped over budget committee. Um, there were a few things from our last meeting, but they more or less will be directed towards Frank as far as reports they're looking for and assistance, so I'll discuss that with Frank. Um, and the other is, as Mrs. Katur had mentioned, last evening, they had an attorney who did a presentation as far as the responsibility of board members and, um, what the budget committee was responsible for. Um, as Mrs. Katur said, that regards of how long you, you've been in a position, you can learn something, and it was pretty good on my part, because sitting through a lot of the budget committee meetings, and then questioning where their authority is or where it isn't, it, it was pretty straightforward and outlined as far as, um, especially when it came to the default budgets, or it came to any budget as far as moving monies, that it's the responsibility of either the school board or the selectmen, that's their response, it's their budget once they, it's approved and they can direct it any way they want to. So, it, it was pretty lightning, I'm not sure what you thought of, you, I saw you in the audience.
It was very, yeah, it was very interesting, and, and I thought it was, it was, um, yeah, very helpful meeting, I'm glad I sat in on it. But I think it sounds as though it'll be, if I understood what they were saying correctly, it sounds as though budget committee is going to filter up through, um, their chair, you know, with, when they have questions, it's, it, rather than have everyone kind of as a free-for-all of asking questions, it should be more. Um, and I think there was another question too about whether or not, um, the administrators were going to appear in front of the budget committee, uh, on their own, or each individually.
The question came up, and again, we've talked about it several times too, like, are they gonna come the first day or the second day? Um, again, you, you can't force them to come anyway, so hopefully it'll be at the right time and the best time for them. So, it was interesting.
Yeah, the, um, the addition of the, um, managers other than the superintendent and the BA.
Yeah.
For many years, that's all it was, um, and then right around Dr. Color's last two years, I think the big year was when we had the big cuts, we, they wanted to ask the managers what the impacts were, which were many at that time, and, uh, and I think, you know, it sort of went fairly, fairly well, um, but again, I think the, the, it's gotten a little off-kilter for the simple reason that they're presenting numbers and there's no, not any questions, and the questions that come when they vote. And so that's where, again, I, I, I don't know if they discussed, I mean, I wasn't there, but they discussed if there's a, a better time or not for, for them to be there.
To be honest, it was kinda like, it was kinda like split. Some of them thought before, some of them thought afterwards.
What did the attorney think?
Um, he, he didn't really say.
Okay.
Just that, I mean, sometimes having that person there is helpful, it is, but it's just a matter of when that person, and he didn't really discuss when.
Would it be an option to have the budget manager there at the first presentation, and then given the vote, is, is it one week later or two weeks later? Two weeks later?
One week.
The next week?
Tuesday to Tuesday, Thursday to Thursday. Let's cross that.
Could they email any questions so that at least they could have a response?
Yeah, the answer is yes, but it doesn't happen. I mean, I think this is one of the calls, um, Brian, were you and, and your management team, and Brian will probably have to come and say, "Hey, this is what we'd like to do." Like, again, my, my, based on what I've seen the last four years of the budget committee, I believe that, that the, uh, school board rep, the, um, superintendent, and the business manager can present every line item in the budget adequately to the budget committee. If they have a question at that time, that can be answered, they can get the answer by the next meeting, so if it's Tuesday, they get it Thursday, if it's Thursday, they get it on Tuesday, still well before when they're going to vote, and then if the, the person that owns the budget is there, for, for no other reason than when that budget line comes up for discussion and vote, um, uh, it, it can, it can occur. Um, I don't know if the, if, if they're, I, I, I watched, um, uh, one of the meetings here recently, and, uh, they were talking about, uh, when they were gonna do final voting on budgets. Um, are they going to vote?
They talked to, they talked to, and talked about the final bottom-line number until the end.
So, but, but, but they're gonna approve, like, they'll approve special services, and it's dinner dinner on Tuesday, they'll approve the special services budget the following Tuesday?
Best of my knowledge, yes.
And, and, building up to the bottom-line approval.
Yeah.
All right, so off to new business, 2015-16 budget schedule revised.
Um, so this evening, we've had this, the, uh, we will have the strategic, uh, administrative teams, it's actually, uh, the district admin teams, uh, strategic, uh, budget pieces rather than, than the superintendents. The salary guidelines we've done, Julie's here for her curriculum piece, and then we'll go very quickly through three pretty nondescript budgets. The district administration, business and finance, and, and HR, all of those are, you know, up and down a little bit, um, but essentially, uh, a flat line. Uh, next week would be foods, uh, food service, and then the three schools, and that would be the, the biggest piece, technology, uh, building grounds, and transportation, and then we try to leave special services last because it is such a shot in the dark at this time of year. I mean, it can go up $150,000 in an hour, it can go down $200,000 in an hour, so, I mean, the later we get the data, and, and essentially, you'll have to present pretty much a new budget to the budget committee at the very last budget committee meeting, just, just because it's at, it's at volatile. So, that's the recommendation.
I will, um, there were one thing, uh, Brian, and Brian, uh, from your budget committee meeting. which was the enrollment report. They were asking which day you were going to use. And it is October 1st, so it is whatever the enrollment is today. But I know that, I heard them ask you that question. But, and are you going back to the grid that you had from previous years? Is this just a modified version, scaled-down version that we got tonight? Remember, we had like a spreadsheet that showed that?
We can, well.
Changes that well.
Well, it was on the, the meeting.
He's not going to like that one.
It was on the meeting for September 13th to really sit down and look at it. We discussed this a lot with the admin team. I mean, this is a source of concern to teachers and employees. If you look at the, at the enrollment numbers tonight, we got, we're at 1,414. Last year's October, we're 1,437, which is a difference of 23. And if you look at the graduating class of 103 and the incoming grade ones at 78, that's a difference of 25. So basically, as larger classes are graduating, we're bringing in a fairly consistent number. Last year, we had rifled a grade two position based on the budget projection model. We're going to get hit one of these times with a bump. And we're only going to end up with 84 kids and we're going to need five classes. We know that. But I think what we really have to do is have a long-term strategy. If you look at the high school enrollment numbers, you know, they have two big classes this year. They're stretched. They'll be stretched again next year. I don't think we may even be looking at any sort of reduction as long as even one of those big classes is here. So I think you're looking at a fairly sustained period of minimal change, if any, at the high school. And then the question becomes, how do you change? I think what we have to have is a long-term plan that says, here's the student population. Here are the needs. Here's the staffing that we need. Here's the programs that we need. And over time, if we have lower enrollment as that older group goes up, we have to be thinking about not just taking savings, taking savings. But how do we get those supports in place to make up for that 1.5 million that we lost in 1112? I mean, we're not where we'd like to be in terms of being proactive in special education. We're not where we'd like to be at the middle school at RTI. We don't have enough support for math and reading for our struggling students. We don't have the programs that we'd like to have for the top 5-10% for whom those enrichment activities can make such a difference. And so to me, you know, if we don't come with a long-term strategy of what we'd like to do, then you leave yourself, you know, unable to basically make to the community that value proposition that I think has worked relatively well in the last couple of budgets. So it would be, you know, I think the board's task for the superintendent, whoever that is, to sit down and look at that enrollment and win of the projections. And how do we recognize that the student population is decreasing, but at the same point in time, keep some of that capacity? How do we try to keep as many teachers whole as possible to keep those quality teachers? And we really need to have a long-term plan that says, here's where we're going to be able to increase services. There are times that we will take savings and there will be times that we'll take an increase in services because those services are needed. And, you know, the, the population within the shoot that's already in the school district is fairly stable. I mean, if you look at the only difference, we're within two students of being the same number of students, except for that difference between last year's graduating class of 103 and this year's enrollment of 78. So there is some stability there. I don't think, I think that we have need of those additional services. And I think our students would be doing better if we had them. And it causes me anguish that we don't have the level of services, both within special education and for other struggling students. That we, you know, we have calls from parents who say, well, what others, you know, do you have, do you have math services for my student in grade two? And the reality is, your child is behind, but not behind enough to qualify for the amount of services that we have. It's not a pleasant conversation for me as a superintendent. So to me, that's, that's one of the crucial plans going forward for the board. And one of the things I was going to say at the September 3rd meeting was that in prior years, it's been the strategic, you know, it's been the superintendent's strategic budget priorities. This year is the administrative teams, which means it's probably a little broader because everybody wants a little bit more, and it is significantly more money. My hope would be that in the not-so-distant future, it will come forward as a school board's priorities because we'll have the plan and structure in place in such a way that we know two years out, you know, what our needs are. We know now what our needs are. We know what we'd like. It's just a matter of putting that value proposition together, trying to make good use of the resources that we have so that we gain the trust of the community to listen when we say, we need X or we need Y. And I think we've come a long way in that regard in the last two years in terms of trust in the community. And I think that goes, you know, and speaks good measure to the board over the last two years. I remember the board that I began with here. And the sort of circus atmosphere that's been here over the last month was calm and fair. And one of the things that I quietly took great satisfaction in was that over time, the board took on the responsibilities of, and ownership of the minimum standards of public school approval. Almost all of those statements started with, the local school board shall ensure. And I think the board has done a very good job of spending time and giving direction to those programs. There are times that they've disagreed with teachers and that caused some consternation. But in the end, a lot of those are your decisions to make. I think there's been more trust established between teachers. We've gone from great animosity about PERC things to now a consent agenda where we had, you know, good conversation. I think that the PERC committee has served itself well. But to get back to your question, John, I think that's the key thing that has to be done in the next two to three years. If we don't have a plan, somebody's going to hand us a plan and it's not going to be pretty.
No, I, I, no, I agree. I was actually just questioning the form, but, but no, I agree. I don't believe that you're going to see very much change in the high school, nor should we look to make changes. I mean, this is the time where we should continue to increase the rigor, increase the opportunities for our top 5-10% students, continue to challenge our teachers to become better at what they do as long as we're providing them support that's necessary to do that. Continue to challenge our students to learn at a much higher, a much higher level and use all the resources that we, that we can. And, you know, I think that it all starts with a solid foundation. And we weakened ours a little bit. And like I said, we just need to, we need to strengthen the foundation back up again and get these processes back in place. Because if not, two years from now, we're going to be having the same conversation. And we're, people are going to be asking us why. And, and, I don't know, we really have those answers.
I have a question about the strategic budget items.
I'm sorry about that.
I have a question. I was just going through the strategic budget items. You said these came from the, it's not yours anymore, it's the administrator's?
Some of these came from the strategic planning when we started to talk. What we talked about, I showed them the superintendent's budget priorities in the last two budgets and said, quite honestly, those were things that I had called out of conversations with the board and conversations with administration about where we wanted to go, both building administration and SAU administration. But at this point in time, having gone through that twice, I really do think it's a time to open it up and to get the, a budget process where building administration is beginning to think strategically. If you, I think at times, a school budget can come as a wish list that's undifferentiated and building people just say, I want, I want, I want. And they're not strategic about it, and then other people make those decisions for them. So the options are to have someone like me do it, or someone like the board do it, or the budget do it. And then the buildings and people like Dr. Hian and Director Banderski lose control at some point of the ability to say, but these are the most important things. Because you start too broad. And so I think if we're going to become the district that we can, we have to start putting more of that responsibility to be strategic, but yet realistic with the administration. And that's why we've had these conversations. And what's, what's in this admin team's strategic budget priorities is all of the things that each of those people felt should come forward. All of them wanted to put more in. All of them are expecting that some things will come out, but they're trying to arrange by priority. But recognize, if you look at the bottom dollar, this strategic budget priorities is probably five to seven times more than the last two years' strategic priorities. And that's not counting, and I know Holly could tell you to the number, since they rolled over the LEA contract. I'm guessing north of $120,000 for LEA members, at roughly $1,500 apiece for STEPS and about 80 teachers. And throw in some grade changes and you're going to be somewhere around there. And that's not counting any increases in regular budgets. So it is a starting point. Two of the things that I'm most pleased with is that GMS and LMS felt it a very significant priority to try and raise the stipend amounts for the grade-level team leaders. They are on the leadership team. They help facilitate a lot of very important conversations around data and around, around grade-level improvement. And additional $5,000 per school for professional development for those people. You can't just ask people to facilitate and do that work and be a leader among colleagues without giving them the resources to do that. So I'm very pleased that those are there. Some other things, the LMS enrichment specialist, by the way, is in there. That should say part-time. I got an update from Mr. Leckwider today and did that move it down. But if you look at it, primarily, this is about enhancing programs in some cases that offer more opportunity, such as the part-time music teacher at LMS, and trying to give more support to students who are not achieving a level that we would like. So it's more support for those who are struggling to try and keep them and catch them up to grade level and more opportunities for students at the top end. Of note, the PE health ed teacher at the high school requests for a part-time to full-time position. We have a situation right now at the high school where we have a full-time phys ed, a half-time health phys ed, and an athletic director. And currently, and in recent history, the athletic director has been phys ed certified as is required in the board-approved job description and teaches a couple of courses a year. Coach Patterson actually has taught more than that. And we turned out a great number of requests for physical education classes. It's probably the greatest number of course requests in both this year and last year that went unfulfilled. In fact, I think what we ended up doing is, in one of the years, was just wiping all of the requests for freshmen and sophomores because the juniors and seniors filled all the empty seats. That's not a situation that you want to see. So this is, and the problem becomes, if you have a half-time health phys ed teacher with somebody that you're going to bring in for the longer term, they're not going to, you're not going to, you may get the person that you want for a single year, but then they're going to be gone. So until we make the investment in making that a full-time position, you're going to have a rotating door.
When this comes forward, can we get, I guess, a rough understanding of what requests came in? So what's turned out, as well as what's filled today?
So this isn't, this isn't intended to replace the normal budget process.
Oh, I know, no, this is good to see.
It's just foreshadowing some of the things that you'll see.
I know seeing like this helps me because now I know what the administration's vision is, what their strategy is, that when we are doing the budget, I'd say, oh, they want this because of this longer-term. This helps a lot.
I think it's great that they got more involved with this also. I mean, getting more ownership into it. Yeah, and it's like you said, I mean, maybe some of these items will be cut, but at least they're starting to look at their needs and the school's needs rather than, say, yourself telling them what they need.
A lot of things really clicked, I don't know, Dr. Hian, in that two-day session. You know, it has been a real struggle to get working on those instructional units and there was a lot of pushback. This is the first year that Dr. Hian will get to meet regularly once a month with the curriculum facilitators at the high school. But, you know, when we sat there having, going through our second year of strategic planning over the summer, because the first year really was more catch-up for me. The first year was very much like that. Really to be able to see the connections being made. And what we had planned for the three-day workshop in August, and budgeted for, it was the building-level administrator who said, but wait, if this is the priority and the focus is this way, this is really great PD, but that's not where it should be. It should come after we've done all of this work on the instructional unit design because it'll be more meaningful to teachers. And it was just so great just to sit back and see people talking about where to move PD, making sure the PD aligned, you know, the teacher leadership piece. And a lot of comments about how things really started to be, to be falling into place. And very gratifying to be able to sit back on my hands for a good chunk of meetings.
I agree with a lot of the vision too. A lot of good stuff. The geometry in grade eight is awesome. Computer lab stuff at GMS is awesome. I will say, just being who I am, I would have much rather seen, you know, additions in STEM versus PE, but we'll see. That's why I want to see what they asked for, basically. But I'd still definitely like to see more focus on technology at the high school. We're weak in that area.
Sped is crucial. You'll notice a part-time reading teacher in the high school. In terms of the three buildings, we tried to get away from being too specific. So, for example, in GMS, computer lab programming, this tier-three stipend. And LMS, the same thing. We've got some stuff there, so the enrichment specialist or some sort of services. And that really is the next level of conversation. Gee, we would really love to have a half-time or a full-time enrichment specialist. Now, the reality is, given the budget and the fact that we're not going to get an additional $713,549.82, how do we try to get as much of that function in a budget that we can get the town to vote for? And so that's, you know, the next step of the conversation. And quite honestly, the goal would be that next year, the board would actually receive this late August and start to have some conversations. And hopefully, it would overlay with some strategic planning. But that's up to the board and anyone who's here. But that's typically the way it is done. It takes a while to get it to come together. So what was originally there in some of the cases for additional stuff was things like coding. And the building administration basically said, until we have a chance to talk with our teachers, what programs the teachers feel we want to offer that are ancillary and enrichment, we don't want to make a statement as a building administrator that we're going to go here versus there. And so I think they'll have more of that detail by the time the budgets come, perhaps, perhaps not. One of the things that is happening is you look at a fairly big number for special services. Again, we're keeping more students in district. Part-time reading teacher at the high school. And another changing a part-time to a full-time reading teacher at the middle school. Based on the number of IEPs that are being written for preschool students, we really believe we're going to need a part-time preschool teacher. Eight new pairs will be required next year by IEPs. And because of increasing costs within the federal and state grants that go to And because of increasing costs within the federal and state grants that go to special services, they'll be able to, those increased costs, including teacher salaries, because there's several teachers in there, that will go up enough that we'll have to push three PERS into the general fund that were covered under the special education fund.
So, on the strategic budget, you said that we're keeping more and more students in district, which is a tremendous cost savings to the district. However, we're not seeing, I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing the, I'm seeing the, if you're coming to me and you're saying, "Okay, I need a part-time preschool teacher," which we use that one. I mean, I don't think we're gonna send preschoolers out, but using that or use a CHPT reading teacher, because that's probably more prevalent. If you're, it would be nice to see that, okay, we need this position, and the cost for this position is $32,000. Or, behind curtain number two, is we send them out of district, and the cost is $60,000. I mean, so, at least with special education, I think it's very important that if the argument is that we're using more and more services in home, in district, which I think, again, is something that the district has been encouraging, realizing the costs involved with that, at the same time, we need to be able to, I mean, if, by looking at this, using special services, you know, the budget line on that is, you know, $317,000, okay? And that's, and that's fine. However, if the, if the reflection on that is that it would've cost $500,000, then there, that's a, then the line item doesn't look so big. I mean, it's big, but it doesn't look so big. See, 'cause, you know, what we all see here, and I don't know how you got to $316,000, 'cause when I add those numbers up, they don't seem to add that high, but maybe that's But if that's the case, we need to, we need to just see, we just need to see that, that process on that. Because I know there's probably many other line items for special services. As you said, you're gonna present a budget, and a month later, you're gonna present a different budget, because it's gonna be that fluid in special education.
The biggest piece, it's easiest to overlook there, is the 11 PERS, which are a total of $160,000. Because there's no zeros there, the numbers shift to the right. One of the difficulties that we're having with PERS is, and there was a long discussion with all three building administrators and Director Banderski, we often have special ed meetings without an LEA representative. An LEA in this situation means, refers to the LEA, the local educational association, in other words, a district rep. We don't have the number of people that we need with EH cert. We don't have the number of people that we need with LD cert. We've had no luck recruiting people, and so, we're literally gonna have to generate them. There's a legitimate argument to be made to say that if we hired a half-time person to make sure we had an LEA rep at all of the meetings where a parent just argues and says, "Oh, my child needs a one-on-one, because it feels that the child's getting attention," that position may more than pay for itself. I mean, there are times that, you know, and if you talk to Assistant Principal Pharoah and Principal Thompson, they would tell you that they both spend one and a half days a week, every week, all year, in special education meetings. That's three days a week of administrator salary. LMS, I don't know if they're that much less. It is intensive. We're getting traction. We still have some staffing things to do procedurally. Our IEPs are getting better. We had a great full day on the Wednesday in August, where every special ed teacher got to meet with their PERS, sit down and plan programs on the Wednesday before school started in the groups with facilitation from an outside facilitator, as well as Director Banderski. And I was fortunate to have enough time to be able to drop by twice. The quality of the conversations was very high. I got to ask good questions, because I had a lot of questions, and so, I don't mind showing my ignorance every now and again, and getting answers from the experts. But the day was well-received by all, and the feedback was strong. But there's still much to do in that area. That number's a lot higher than I would like. And the PERS creep, we need to turn the corner on. I think we turned the corner on a lot of things in special education. But, you know, if we get that part-time reading teacher at the high school, it will help, because currently, we have required services that we're stretched to provide. I think these are some of the areas where, in three years' time, when we start to have some cuts, we may have to say, "Okay, so, instead of, you know, riffing a grade-five teacher in two years from September, we're gonna turn that into a half-time reading, we're gonna cover that half-time reading at LMS and GMS." And so, you know, we'll take an existing person who's reading-certified, and rather than riff them, get rid of the two part-time positions, so that we keep, be able to retain our people and plan over time. With respect to technology, the one position, total cost, salary, and benefits of estimated about $75,000, is the one that we would need for the new student information system. And quite honestly, we don't know how long we'll be able to keep the existing one held together. Mr. Cooper, teachers were able to take attendance on the first day of school in September, but the day before that, there were concerns, even about taking attendance.
Specifically to grade five?
Yeah.
I thought that, I believe there were some issues with that. I know when we start the year, we usually do a hard count anyways, anyway, when we start the day at advisory. I know there were, I think there were some glitches that took a few days to work out.
Yeah, and the glitches are getting more frequent and more significant.
Yes.
It's basically a product that hasn't been supported.
Yes.
For several years. So, there's nobody working back-of-house on enhancements. They're basically, it's...
Particularly to do what we wanna do at the high school and how we use our grading, it's very difficult, very difficult program.
And one more to bring up, just looking at the priorities and looking at the schedule. Next week, we have, and this is less important, obviously, than stuff that directly affects education, but next week, we have food service in here. I'd be curious if there's ever been any thought to, you know, improving the quality of our lunches. Prices have continually gone...
I can assure you, that is a constant issue.
I honestly, I've stopped feeding my kids. Like, we make lunch now, 'cause I go in there and have lunch with the kids sometimes, and I'll eat it, and it's terrible.
You gotta get out of the elementary school thing.
Okay, then maybe it's just the problem with elementary school, but, I mean, the chicken fajitas, it's not chicken. It's like processed, stamped stuff with like fake grill marks on it. It's like, we could buy chicken and cook it. It's not that hard. If you look at the menu, and it says like fresh fruit, it's a fruit cocktail out of a can soaked in sugar. It's not fresh food. I think the only thing that is actually fresh is like the carrots and the apples. Everything else comes out of a can or a box or, I don't know. I've stopped feeding my kids it. That's all I'll say.
I think you need to come to the high school. My daughter seems to love the food.
Really?
Alright.
Next year, I'll have one at LMS. I'll go have lunch with her.
It is funny, my kids are doing more of the à la carte food than the chili comes on.
Had a head salad again today. Looked at her, shoot out a cheeseburger.
A cheeseburger? How hard is to make a cheeseburger? Really?
I don't know how to have this anymore.
I will mention that to...
Because I mean, last year, we would've had an excess of money too, you know, stuff didn't break. So, we're at the point now where our prices are higher enough, we can actually maybe start investing a little bit in actual food.
They're not eating their broccoli and their cauliflower.
They're definitely not eating their broccoli and cauliflower.
With their PB and J.
Yeah. I mean, we have like full kitchens, and all I do is like dump out frozen junk onto a tray and stick it out of it. We have the equipment, we have the manpower, and just, I think we need desire.
So noted.
You're gonna get yourself in trouble. Comments like that next week, man.
Are we ready to move to curriculum?
Curriculum? Before we do, I just wanted to make a comment. Mr. Barker, you were talking about technology at the high school. You may recall, in Perk, we had this discussion a while back, that our goal in terms of technology from the middle to the high school is to have more of the students at the middle school level meet the minimum requirements for technology that we now are teaching in what we call computer applications at the high school. And so, through the digital portfolio process that we began piloting last year, and an additional assessment that the committee needs to write during this year, that fewer and fewer students over time will need to take that course. Typically, that's referred to as waiving that .5 credit. And then, students, instead of only having one technology elective, ICT elective, they would now have two. So, all those students who met the waiver requirements could then choose two upper-level courses. The implication of that is that our teachers who are teaching ICT will not have to teach more and more sections of computer apps. So, we now can have those teachers teaching either additional sections of what we have, because we often have wait lists for things like web design, some of those courses, and we will then have the capacity to introduce some higher-level courses. Personally, having lots of experience in these courses, I would like to see us have a beginning programming, intermediate programming, leading to an advanced placement programming. Schools that have that third course in the middle, rather than basic, jump right to AP, most of the kids are blown out of the water. You might have one or two exceptional students, but you usually need that three-course series to be really successful, to get AP scores above the ones and twos, which is what you want students to be able to do and feel successful also. So, programming, as well as some of the other courses. The teachers during the summer, where they were working on their competencies and grade level indicators, were also talking about perhaps offering an exploratory course. So, a student would experience a quarter or some weeks' short amount of time with several of those specialty courses to figure out what they really, where their niche is, and what they might like to take for their elective, either the second elective, or maybe a third and a fourth elective. And eventually, trying to have some kind of coordination between, with the STEM courses, science, technology, and math, so that students, right now, we have some pieces of pre-engineering or STEM pathway. We really need to tighten that, so that students can see what collection of courses will lead them to certain careers or majors in college and that kind of thing.
I think that's huge. By company, because we do a lot of talking at colleges. I was actually at NHTI yesterday, at Career Day, talking about stuff. And I think a lot of kids don't realize how important technology is. Even if you're into sales and marketing, it's all technology now. You need to have that skill set, or you're not gonna be successful. And I don't think people realize that. But if you could have those courses that bridge it, if you wanna take a marketing course but have like a digital marketing course that branches technology and marketing, I think you'll see more interest. And probably more interest from, you know, both sexes. Right now, it's probably heavily male. You start introducing those ones that are on, you know, content technology or marketing technology, you might get more of the female audience.
So, we have several steps, and it will take us some time to get there. And the both bring your own device, and if we're able to do the one-to-one technology, then we don't need to be talking about additional labs, which, separate from the hardware, we don't have space. We don't have the rooms to be able to do that, because the more courses you offer, the more spaces that you need. But we don't necessarily have to commit to that hardware just for those courses if we're providing that hardware for students in other ways.
Makes sense.
Okay, so, I don't know if you have questions, or you just want me to jot highlights here?
I think there's nothing over, we usually look at anything over like a thousand or two thousand, right? There's nothing that meets that criteria.
No, there's only one thing, and rather than have you see it afterwards, oh, it's not there. How did that happen? I thought I checked this, but my brain is not working real well. There is supposed to be, in the 2210 account, which is Improvement of Instruction District Wide, a 640 account. And I know I put money there. I guess we'll have to get that to you. I apologize, I really thought I checked this several times. 610, 640. Let's see it. The 640 account is replacement of, just looking in one more place. It's replacement of primarily text, but curriculum materials. So, given the emphasis we've had in the increased activity that Perk has had, and encouraging, looking at the math materials we've bought, English Language Arts lately, and then we'll be going through the other curriculum areas, rather than having each building budget for those renewable materials every five years for each curriculum area, more or less, Dr. Cochrane and I felt that we should put it in the district budget, when it's a district initiative that bridges more than one school. Because we don't always know, like, if we know it's in this budget this year, we're gonna be looking at social studies and science materials. Because some of those are not published last year, to be able to predict an exact dollar today for you, what we'll have to do, and again, the figure I put in was $65,000, because that's just a little over what we paid for the...
That's a line item. That was gross.
Opened up a few eyes.
It is. And I know I put it in there, 'cause we even created it, the line didn't even exist in 2210.
It was really easy before that one came out.
That's just...
Sixty-five hundred.
That's what we spent on math materials, and that was just grades six through 11. Math and series like that with the digital components are particularly expensive. But I felt we should go with basically the same figure, rather than boosting it by 10 or 20% for next year. And what we would do is, we would look at our K-12 program, in this case, social studies and science, see what the needs are, and then apportion the funding among the schools as best we can. And in some cases, we may have to move, you know, if we're short a few dollars here and there, we often have the capability to move them around. But it's really hard to predict a year-plus ahead of time what materials we'll purchase and that'll be available, and then to get those that are, you know, have most recent copyrights and that kind of thing.
Well, those dollars are coming out of the other three schools to go into that line item.
In other words, they have not put, we've directed them not to put whole classroom sets of replacement materials in their building levels. The only thing you'll see in their 640 lines is if they need five or 10 books, because some were lost, or enrollments change, that kind of thing. So, you will not, this year, for instance, you saw about $23,000 or $24,000 at the middle school, the remainder in the high school budget in various subject areas. So, you won't be seeing those large figures. Instead, they will all rest in the district budget. I ended up doing all the ordering, negotiating with the companies. We got a signi, when we ordered that way, we got a significant discount. We saved over $20,000. Some of that, about 10 of it is pretty common that they give us the teacher materials, but we did very well with the supplemental materials as well.
We've learned two things, I think, in the last couple of years. One is, by the time you take three schools in different grade levels and different departments, every year, something gets missed at the school level. And given that Julie plays that coordinating function for curriculum instruction and shares a Perk committee, we had had in the last couple of years to go find 20 or more thousand dollars for replacement or new textbooks that were related to that curriculum cycle that... that, uh, uh, Ms. LaFleur, you've mentioned. And so to, to budget that out and then have somebody come in and say, oops, was that this year? I thought that was next year. And the other piece, which pretty much covers that loss for us, was that, um, Dr. Heon, like Mr. Markowitz, is an excellent negotiator. And, uh, we have made.
I'll buy a car for you.
We have, uh, done very well with the additional money that, uh, she has been able to save us in terms of, of tens of thousands of dollars each of the last two years by negotiating. And for a district our size to be able to do that, I, I, we had, couldn't do that in Ashworth. So I don't know where she developed her skill, but whatever it is, I wish I had a license on it.
Now, for the things you identified in the strategic priorities, are those in this budget or those in the school budgets? Because I don't see those either. It's the professional development for tech integration and guaranteed.
Actually, it says in here, right, um, only science is mentioned, but, um, the year is for social studies, PE, and we're actually behind on science. Uh, what section is it in? I think it didn't have a dollar. Where's the word?
In the priorities, twenty-eight thousand dollars is listed, or twenty-seven thousand dollars is listed. I don't see a jump in twenty-seven thousand dollars anywhere.
Which section are you looking in?
I'm looking at, at the, the, that spreadsheet you have right there. The green section up top is.
Oh, yes. Profes-, um, di-, right. Um, no, it's not there. It should be there, right?
What big old line thing get pulled?
No, somewhere. I saw it. I apologize. I didn't circle it. It just says, sorry. Oh, under CHS, it's, it's, it says three, but three isn't part of CHS. It's the numbered.
C-C-H-S.
I don't know where the one, in the second page, the salmon colored area that says CHS.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Then there's a three and four. Those are actually separate goals. Did we drop the one and two for some reason, Brian? In any event, um, the curriculum cycle, science, that should have that. It should say social studies, science and PE, health PE. Those are the areas. And then over to the left would be that. We've had a disconnect. I've been out sick and, um, was over at GMS today, so.
So where's the, the, the development and implementation of a guaranteed enviable curriculum, the extr-, instructional unit development? Is that eighteen thousand?
That's a one-ten account, which you're not seeing.
Okay.
Um, anything that involves stipends for staff.
Oh, yeah, from the stipends. Okay.
Exactly. You'll see it in the personnel salary.
And the PD will be in the PD budget. Okay.
Yeah, the one-ten will appear in twenty-two thirteen. That's the other thing you don't see, and I can, um, just brief you because I won't be here then. But when you get to twenty-two thirteen, there is a one, a one-ten account tied to that. And that, um, has, has been for our mentoring program. Um, we do teacher orientation in August and then, um, each of our teachers, um, who are new to the district, whether they're veterans or not, is provided a mentor. And somebody who's on an alternative four plan, which typically would be, um, critical shortage areas, math primarily, um, it, it, that's where we've experienced the, the, um, people who need the, the alternative four programs. Um, that can take up to two years. So it's everybody in their first year, but some people in their second year also. And my note, when you do see it, says that we have typically had twenty people. In the, in the four years I've been here, we've had right around twenty, um, people who have needed a mentor. And when that number is, exceeds about four in each building, that's more than I can manage and help coordinate, touch base with them. So, um, we've had a coordinator that works with me at each building that runs monthly new teacher meetings, touches base with both the mentors and the mentees, um, making sure they click and, um, have the information that's timely to the month when they're doing grading or having a school-wide event or things like that. So that's been a significant amount of money, um, every year. And we've been able to tease out the balance, like last year, we only funded, um, ten or twelve and the rest came out of a grant. But when I do that, then we can't use that grant money for other things. So, um, it's always this juggling game. And as you know, federal grant monies have reduced each year typically. We had that big influx of what was referred to as our money, um, five and six years ago. And we had a little carryover for a couple of years, but we're not, we don't have that any longer. So you will see that when you see it. And we try to get the system not to populate last year's names. The last couple of years, it always puts in last year's names and it doesn't include everybody we paid. It only includes those that could be paid with that limited amount. Um, so in my ne-, if it does put those old names, you will also see my narrative, which says what I've just explained about, that the average has been twenty over the last several years.
I'm all set. Can we just get an updated, uh, curriculum budget emailed to us tomorrow? Did we get the right numbers?
There's two other budgets on the show.
Yeah, both Michelle and I printed this.
It really doesn't matter.
I have no idea how come.
You guys are sniffling, so it'll be, uh, a day or two.
We'll get with Frank and see.
Yeah.
Looks better this way, John.
I really did. If I didn't want you to know, I wouldn't have mentioned.
Five, sixty-five hundred, but, but you put a thousand at the end of it. It was, eh, maybe we ought to just take a.
Yeah, I got your attention, didn't I?
There are two other budgets here that I think are.
Set with me.
There's an, there's an error in the finance budget and I do not pretend to be able to speak to you about the debt service. So we'll leave that to Frank as well.
The debt service is an easy one.
Yeah. It is. It is. But if you have any questions, it would not be me answering them. So, uh, if we look at the HR staff services, there is an increase. Uh, and that increase is directly attributed to the Sun Guard User Conference, uh, that Holly has done just a fabulous job of ramping up and she's been such a tremendous, uh, asset to the office. Uh, in order to, her to be able to, to completely, um, step into that role, she's going to need some, some specific PD. Um, one is that user conference and the other is, is, uh, noted at the top. So there's a nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars for the conference and workshop reimbursement. Um, there are some areas, she has, she has, uh, a broad, a very deep background, but it does have some areas that need to be filled in. So she's actually laid out those areas. And, uh, the PD that she's, uh, signing up for basically, uh, has to, uh, she, she's aligned it with the stuff that we already have and then is augmenting that. Now I do see that the Sun Guard User Conference is in there twice. Oh, sorry. One's under travel, one's under the actual reimbursement. Okay. So this one conference is going to be about two thousand fifty dollars for the whole workshop. That makes sense. So that explains that, that increase. Um, any questions about the, the staff services? Looks pretty straightforward. The, uh, the other is district administration, the SAU budget in, in essence. Um, if you look at the bottom line, it's down at four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. And the reason for that is that advertising, uh, would budget for twenty-five hundred dollars the last two years and, uh, we're, we're just around nineteen hundred dollars or slightly less. And so we brought that number down representing, you know, slightly more than the last two years actual. And that's the difference to within fifty dollars of the two.
Any questions?
School board budget went down a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I, I don't understand why you zeroed out.
The audit or legal fees. Neither do I.
There's audits every other year. Isn't audit every other year or no?
Yes, it does. I think it has to do with, with, uh, Frank's attendance in the last week.
Audit is every year, but, um, uh, yeah, so that was.
The legal services woke her up.
They went from sixty-one to seven. You'll be finding money for us for pay the auditor and the, uh.
Julie did not take it all.
I think we need a raise.
Warren article, baby.
That's ever so good too.
And is that it?
I believe so.
Yep. Are we done with the policies too or? Oh, we're done with them?
Yeah.
Sweet. So I say we might have a long non-public sale.
They didn't give us a manifest today, did they?
No idea.
They did.
There it is. Um, with respect to the policies. The, the recommendations that Frank gave tonight were the recommendations that best align with safety, security, um, and liability. And I recognize that, that before we get this process completed, we'll have to have some conversations about what we do with access. I know, Mr. York, if you recall, the Building and Grounds Committee felt that, you know, the single most important piece to focus on is access to the building, controlling access to the building during instructional day for staff and, and student safety. Um, CHS especially has basically been an open school from first thing in the morning until last thing at night until ten o'clock. As long as there's a custodian in the building, the building's open, the people can come in and out. And while nothing bad has happened, uh, you, that's one of the areas that I know Frank is gonna, gonna want to talk about. How do we, how do we maintain the level of use and the level of access to the building while trying to minimize our, our risk at the same time?
What do you mean by open building? Because I can't get in here. I go and buzz the door and then the people flag me out because they don't even recognize who I am. So I don't see how else, how else is getting in?
Well, I mean, I, I've, uh, you come up here after school is out.
Oh, then it's open.
I think it's open.
But you, you can't get in during.
During the day you can't get in, no.
During school hours, you can't get in, no.
I'll buzz them like.
You get out, but you can't get in, but.
I'm at your office.
Yeah.
Wearing a badge.
I just can't, it doesn't work.
Don't pass go. No, but I think that, uh, I mean, I think that, you know, the, the, um, the, the schools are used for many things. Um, I understand the need for the safety and stuff like that of the kids and stuff. But at the same time, you can't be having kids walk out the door at two-thirty to go out to their car for whatever reason and coming back at three or three-thirty and they can't get in the building because it's all locked up and there's nobody around and they're buzzing and stuff like that. So I, 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 I think there's a, there's a happy median and, and, and I think we'll, we'll, we'll find it.
And folks have been very patient with us in this process. If we had known how much work and how much the time this setup would been, and if we had predicted that we'd be running two weeks late because of construction stuff over the summer, I think, you know, we would have done things very differently. Kyle has, has had very good customer service of late, uh, been very responsive. And, uh, you know, now it's just a matter of, of things are, are, are up and functional. And then it's negotiating, how open do we want the schools to be? And how do we reflect that in our policies and in our practices? There, there are four licenses that come with the software. So you can literally have, you know, uh, the receptionist control this. So if somebody has a special request, you know, there's a, a play on a Wednesday night, I mean, they can literally go in on the fly and, and do it. Now, to some extent, you want to encourage that and to some extent, you want to standardize it. And I think that will be the conversation.
Any questions on the manifest?
No, but, um, since we're at the end, I was going to bring up the, we need to, do we need to put out an ad for a school board member? And then accept, I think they can usually come and give a little presentation and then.
Or first you gotta get.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that.
I remember we did this a long time ago. We appointed someone.
Trying to look for that. What was that?
We do.
Yeah, we do.
There's a whole process people have to go through.
Yeah, there's a whole process that I can also run by, um.
Laura's gonna help us. I was just looking at it. Where'd it go?
I think you do have to.
Get to advertise it, yeah.
Week or two that it's advertised, people send in their resume and reasons why they want to be and, uh, you know, then we'll have non-public discussion with these individuals and.
I think it's public. I know when Budget Committee, when, um, Russ McDall resigned, I volunteered. And I, there was no resume. I literally showed up that night. It was me and, actually the guy that just left, what's his name? Finnegan.
Yeah.
We both got there. We both gave up, gave those spiel, asked a couple of questions and they voted right then and there. And like, he won, took you off the office and sat down.
I don't think it's that, that cut and dry as a school board, but it, it might be, but I don't, I don't think it is. I think on previous school boards that our budgets had had been that way, but.
What's the policy, Mr. Parker? It's, oh, I lost it. The RSA is one-nine-seven, colon, twenty-six. Post, oh, there's a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a whole pry. Brian, you may need to do a little bit of homework on, on, on that. There's a, there is a school board policy on it. And in that school board policy.
BBB, BBBC? BBBC?
Yeah, ours is BBBC. But that doesn't really tell us much. It just says. They can see she'll be filled in accordance with RSA one-nine-seven and RSA, which of these two are here? Oh, yours, Brian.
Yeah, all it says is in accordance with.
Yeah. She'll have to read it and figure out if there's timeframes and stuff like that. You had that handy pretty quick. You had that handy pretty quick.
Alright, so we'll look into that again.
Manifest, any questions?
Short one. Easy. Says a short one. It was easy.
Yeah.
No more questions?
Doesn't say anything all the time for anything.
Yeah, I think you want to do it as quickly as you can quickly.
Great. That'll go to community forum.
You need to, you need to read the public, where you gotta read the, uh.
I know it.
I'd just like to go non-public ditto, but, uh.
Yeah, yeah. Same thing as last time. Non-public slash RSA ninety-one dash eight, colon, three-one-one. The dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected, one, has the right to a meeting and two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee, C, matters which is discussed in public would likely affect diversity, the reputation of any persons other than a member of the body of the agency itself unless such a person requests an opening, an open meeting.
So may, again.
Yes?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes. On public.